I talked to you. I talked to you. I talked to you.
You made it better.
You made it better. You made it better. The total report, 2021. The total report, 2021. October 4th, 2021. If you guys can go ahead and stamp the pledge of allegiance. If you guys can go ahead and stamp the pledge of allegiance. If you guys can go ahead and stamp the pledge of allegiance.
There's no executive session, is there? There's no executive session, is there? There's no executive session, is there?
Yeah, there's an executive session. Yeah, there's an executive session. Yeah, there's an executive session.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. To the Republic for which it stands. To the Republic for which it stands.
I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it.
One nation, under God. One nation, under God. One nation, under God.
What's the justification for it? What's the justification for it? What's the justification for it?
For receiving legal advice. For receiving legal advice. For receiving legal advice.
On that? On that? On that?
School impact fee. School impact fee. School impact fee.
That's it? That's it? That's it? Okay, as simple as that? Okay, as simple as that? Okay, as simple as that? Okay.
All right. All right. Public notification, this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in Public notification, this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance Public notification, this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance compliance with South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. with South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. with South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Are we good to go on that, Tiffany? Are we good to go on that, Tiffany? Are we good to go on that, Tiffany?
Council chambers is muted. Council chambers is muted. Council chambers is muted. Please unmute council chambers. Please unmute council chambers. Please unmute council chambers. Don't listen to Mr. Greenway. Don't listen to Mr. Greenway. Don't listen to Mr. Greenway.
I can't get it on mute. I can't get it on mute. I can't get it on mute.
Can you guys hear me in the chambers? Can you guys hear me in the chambers? Can you guys hear me in the chambers?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Sir, I think they still have it on mute in there. Sir, I think they still have it on mute in there. Sir, I think they still have it on mute in there.
They do. They do. They do.
Oh, can you hear me, though? Oh, can you hear me, though? Oh, can you hear me, though?
I can hear you. I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay. 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 I'll give him a second. I'll give him a second. I'll give him a second.
Ron. Ron. Ron.
Okay, we can hear you, sir, Logan. Okay, we can hear you, sir, Logan. Okay, we can hear you, sir, Logan.
Perfect. 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 Can I have a motion to have the approval of the agenda? Can I have a motion to have the approval of the agenda? Can I have a motion to have the approval of the agenda?
Do the pledge of allegiance. Do the pledge of allegiance. Do the pledge of allegiance.
Did you make a motion? Did you make a motion? Did you make a motion?
I make a motion, yes. I make a motion, yes. I make a motion, yes.
Okay. 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 I'll second it. I'll second it. I'll second it.
Second by Paul. Second by Paul. Second by Paul.
Someone in, sorry, Logan, somebody in the room needs to mute the settings on their Someone in, sorry, Logan, somebody in the room needs to mute the settings on their Someone in, sorry, Logan, somebody in the room needs to mute the settings on their tablet. 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 If you have your tablet open, mute your audio on your tablet. If you have your tablet open, mute your audio on your tablet. If you have your tablet open, mute your audio on your tablet.
I'm muted. I'm muted. I'm muted.
Is that better? Is that better? Is that better?
We're getting there, slow but sure. We're getting there, slow but sure. We're getting there, slow but sure.
We're gonna get through it, Joe, I promise. We're gonna get through it, Joe, I promise. We're gonna get through it, Joe, I promise.
I know. I know. I know. Hey, listen, it's five o'clock someplace, so. Hey, listen, it's five o'clock someplace, so. Hey, listen, it's five o'clock someplace, so.
Somewhere. Somewhere. Somewhere.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Somewhere. Somewhere. Somewhere.
You got the perfect shirt on for today's meeting. You got the perfect shirt on for today's meeting. You got the perfect shirt on for today's meeting.
We're gonna be just fine. We're gonna be just fine. We're gonna be just fine. So, we have the approval of the agenda. So, we have the approval of the agenda. So, we have the approval of the agenda. Any objections? Any objections? Any objections? All right, agenda approved. All right, agenda approved. All right, agenda approved. We have a motion to approve the minutes for September 7th, 2021. We have a motion to approve the minutes for September 7th, 2021. We have a motion to approve the minutes for September 7th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Chairman, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Chairman, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
We already did that. We already did that. We already did that.
We did the call to order and the pledge of allegiance already. We did the call to order and the pledge of allegiance already. We did the call to order and the pledge of allegiance already.
Okay, we didn't. Okay, we didn't. Okay, we didn't.
Oh, I'm more than happy to do it again, you know me, let's do it. Oh, I'm more than happy to do it again, you know me, let's do it. Oh, I'm more than happy to do it again, you know me, let's do it.
No, that's fine. No, that's fine. No, that's fine.
A move for the approval of the agenda. A move for the approval of the agenda. A move for the approval of the agenda.
Second. Second. Second.
Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? So move, approval of the minutes for September 7th, 2021. So move, approval of the minutes for September 7th, 2021. So move, approval of the minutes for September 7th, 2021. Can I have a motion, please? Can I have a motion, please? Can I have a motion, please?
So move. So move. So move.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it. I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? All right, I'll pass without objection. All right, I'll pass without objection. All right, I'll pass without objection. Do we have any citizens' comments in the chamber, Tiffany? Do we have any citizens' comments in the chamber, Tiffany? Do we have any citizens' comments in the chamber, Tiffany?
No, sir, no, no one. No, sir, no, no one. No, sir, no, no one.
All right, any online, Sarah? All right, any online, Sarah? All right, any online, Sarah?
No, there's no one online to speak at this meeting. No, there's no one online to speak at this meeting. No, there's no one online to speak at this meeting.
Citizen's comment will be closed then. Citizen's comment will be closed then. Citizen's comment will be closed then. Go ahead and give you guys a heads up. Go ahead and give you guys a heads up, I am, obviously, out right now doing this meeting. Go ahead and give you guys a heads up, I am, obviously, out right now doing this meeting. I am, obviously, out right now doing this meeting. Larry asked me to do it, so we're gonna do the best we can with it. Larry asked me to do it, so we're gonna do the best we can with it. Larry asked me to do it, so we're gonna do the best we can with it. We'll just move on to the agenda items then. We'll just move on to the agenda items then. We'll just move on to the agenda items then. Number seven, communication strategy for fiscal year '22, review of key communication Number seven, communication strategy for fiscal year '22, review of key communication Number seven, communication strategy for fiscal year '22, review of key communication events events for 2022. events for 2022. for 2022. We have a presentation on that, I believe, yes? We have a presentation on that, I believe, yes? We have a presentation on that, I believe, yes?
That's correct, Councilman. That's correct, Councilman. That's correct, Councilman.
Awesome. Awesome. Awesome.
My name is Public Information Officer here. My name is Public Information Officer here. My name is Public Information Officer here. I just wanted to go over quickly what we're highlighting for this fiscal year '22. I just wanted to go over quickly what we're highlighting for this fiscal year '22. I just wanted to go over quickly what we're highlighting for this fiscal year '22. First, the overall kind of strategy, communication strategy, intent, as I should say, for Mr. First, the overall kind of strategy, communication strategy, intent, as I should say, for Mr. First, the overall kind of strategy, communication strategy, intent, as I should say, for Mr. Greenway and the county. Greenway and the county. Greenway and the county. His informing connection, information connection for Beaufort County Government to its citizens. His informing connection, information connection for Beaufort County Government to its citizens. His informing connection, information connection for Beaufort County Government to its citizens. Those are kind of our major goals. Those are kind of our major goals. Those are kind of our major goals. Scott's not playing with you, is he? Scott's not playing with you, is he? Scott's not playing with you, is he?
Hey, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. Hey, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. Hey, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. I think somebody still has their microphone unmuted in the chambers, everything's echoing I think somebody still has their microphone unmuted in the chambers, everything's echoing I think somebody still has their microphone unmuted in the chambers, everything's echoing through. 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 Am I the only one, Joe, or are you getting that too? Am I the only one, Joe, or are you getting that too? Am I the only one, Joe, or are you getting that too?
It is absolutely annoying. It is absolutely annoying. It is absolutely annoying.
We're working on it right now, sir. We're working on it right now, sir. We're working on it right now, sir.
See if Sarah can hear that. See if Sarah can hear that. See if Sarah can hear that. Sarah, can you hear us now? Sarah, can you hear us now? Sarah, can you hear us now?
Chairman, I think we need to restart the system, if you, okay. Chairman, I think we need to restart the system, if you, okay. Chairman, I think we need to restart the system, if you, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll stay on, so the meeting won't get lost, FYI, to Chairman Passamit and those I'll stay on, so the meeting won't get lost, FYI, to Chairman Passamit and those I'll stay on, so the meeting won't get lost, FYI, to Chairman Passamit and those that that are online, it won't get dropped if they restart the system in chambers. that are online, it won't get dropped if they restart the system in chambers. are online, it won't get dropped if they restart the system in chambers.
You're all, you know, three of those are all. You're all, you know, all three of those are all. You're all, you know, all three of those are all.
Pick up the technology, but we got it all figured out. We're gonna continue on with item number seven, and we have a presentation for that.
So again, I'm not.
Now, we'll let you pick right back up where you left off.
Thank you. Public Information Officer Chris Opert, next slide, Sarah. So overall, this is what Eric charged me to do over the next year for the fiscal year, is to show transparency within the county, connect the public with the Beaufort County Government, and also with its workforce. Three things he really wanted me to focus on was how we provide services to our residents, identify, secure funding, and help with our capital infrastructure projects, and finally recognize the work that our county employees do, which in turn, we hope and will, help with our recruiting quality talent into our open positions. The key task over the next year will be to magnify our capital improvement projects so the public understands what the county is giving back to them, garner support from our state and federal elected officials for infrastructure projects. We want to create a diverse and highly qualified, talented workforce with HR. And then we also want to show that we are now joint planning with our municipalities in a way that we really haven't in the past. We also want to focus attention on the high-quality services, the fairness in our application of zoning laws, and how we're being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. So, that's overarching what we plan to accomplish in the public information in this county. And then these are the key events that I see over this year that the Public Information Office will be highlighting. This was a collaboration between all the ACAs, Human Resources, and then myself and the county administrator. Next slide. So you can see here, the first three are actually coming up quickly. Envision Beaufort, the Comprehensive Plan, goes in front of council here in the month of October, finishing in November with its third reading. There was a robust, long feedback process that I came about halfway through, and Public Information has worked very hard with the local stakeholders to ensure everyone knew when the public meetings were, and be able to provide feedback to that with Rob Merchant and Planning. The next two, I think we've discussed readily. We have the referendums up on the website already. We've provided talking points, and we're using social media, and already have two media contacts today, asking about just general information, not advocating one way or another. Moving into some of the long-term projects, once we get through November, our capital improvement projects, whether it's the 170 improvement, the ARPA money and how we spend it, infrastructure package that we hope will pass Congress, also our boat landing studies, and then our public facilities. Those are just a few of the things that we'll highlight in the media, social media, and then in community meetings. Hill and Head Airport Expansion, supporting John out there. I think we have a good plan, we're getting the website up and going for that already. And then we'll keep informing the public on those changes as they come out. The redistricting, the key for redistricting to me is transparency of the process. I think the state's about ready to release their maps. We are looking at late October to have a meeting to be briefed on that, and we'll make sure we use all tools necessary for the public to be informed of what the zones are. That has been the second biggest question since I arrived, is who's in whose zone of the 11 council members? And I've been able to point them, we have a great website that does that, they type in their address, there's people that know where to go. And once you show them where to go, they get very excited. Environmental resiliency will be a big topic over the next decade, I think, between stormwater changes, building code and zoning, and then recycling and garbage operations, and how we do that. That has also been the third, is stormwater and how it's draining. There was an article today that talked about two hubcaps basically through the whole system right at Port Royal and Beaufort disarray. So if it's that easy, we have a lot, there's a lot of improvements, I know the stormwater team's working hard. And then finally, the department communication efforts, and when I say that, there's specific ones that aren't always gonna be on the front of my mind, but they always pop up, and I'm always helping them, and that would be examples, animal control, drugs and alcohol, parks and recreation, EMS are just a few, as we work through. They each have their own social media platforms, and we'll be helping them on what's working, what could be better, what type of stories their kind of specific communities and audiences want to know. And having said that, next, the last thing I'd like to discuss today, Mr. Chairman, is kind of the county channel. Scott Grooms and I have sat down and went over exactly where we want to go. The first thing I want to say is that cable-wise, we're at about 200,000 homes. On YouTube, we've reached about 500,000 people in the last year, and then on our website slash Swag, it's another 140. So we have a pretty robust following, and yet it still surprises me that people don't know where to go on that one. So, it's a continual information campaign, we're not necessarily the NBC or the easiest channel to find, but we've done a lot of things. but we've done a lot of things to help kind of brand the channel. You'll notice we're starting to do a bug in the upper left-hand corner so people know exactly what meeting, what date it is, so they can be more informed on what they're watching. We're trying to improve programming by grabbing stuff from NASA TV, which is always a big hit with the kids and even with me to watch the cosmos. And then also trying to pull for our retiree and our marine community some stuff from the Pentagon, which will help kind of build viewership on top of the four normal programs that we already have. And those four programs, you may have seen Coastal Kingdom is the big one. It pulls a lot of people in. We have Low Country Law with the Sheriff's Department, joint venture with the Sheriff's Department. We have Coastline, which is rebranding and refocusing, and Alex is doing a great job. He's really going to hit on these communication efforts that I just went over in that show. Then we're starting to look at maybe some sports programming on top of the baseball tournaments just to kind of draw some viewers in so they know where to come. And then we're working on a Ask Your Council type meeting where each council member gets one episode a month. I think they used to do it in the past. We're going to kind of reinstall that. And then I know that the chairman had talked about, and we're working, sir, on your concept to be able to highlight the different departments and answer some questions directly as the chairman. So that's what you're going to kind of see as we work through this year incrementally. We've already started making some of these changes, and we keep adding to it. And Scott and his crew have done a tremendous job with the brainstorm and with kind of revigorating the county channel so we can get more viewers, especially as more people move in who aren't used to having a county channel. Most of them in New York are focused, where I just came from, are focused on the Board of Education. That's about it. Or a lot of them don't even broadcast their county council meetings anymore. So I'm assuming that we can get that audience, is that the population shifts a little bit. Pending your questions, that's all I have.
Awesome presentation. Before I go, does anybody else have any questions or comments beforehand? I would just like to say that, you know, I think we've done a lot here in the county so far keeping the public, you know, informed and staying updated. A lot of growth's been happening. I love the spreadsheet that you put in there. Two of the big things I do want to focus on, I came across our social media post on the local office of sales tax. I did not see the one for change of government. I might have missed it. I just want to make sure that it is exactly like you said, informational and not advocating one way or another. I did notice that pros were always put first and cons toward the bottom. If people make it that far, I might be a little biased just because of where I stand, I'll be honest. But I just want to make sure that that is an equal opportunity for that information to be done, and all details are coming forward on that.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. And also, the comment section took a lot of the criticisms for us, to be able to pump that up. I tried to go straight out of the South Carolina code as a whole. And then from there, I'll make sure to go back and relook that. The change of government was a lot easier. It was just simply, here's the two forms when you go to the website. We'll be doing that on social media here shortly. And what I put on there was to relook how your government operates, and which one do you want? That was kind of where I went with that one.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, I had a question. How many people on YouTube did you say?
So we're about 500,000 people over the last year. That's the biggest platform. I watched the last county council on my TV at home, because you just literally can log in on your TV now. So it's almost overtaking cable when it comes to people that want to go see it.
Move on to number eight then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda is presentation by South Carolina Youth Challenge Academy. And I believe this is done by Mr. Reese.
Councilman Cunningham.
Yes, sir.
But certainly, our technical difficulty isn't just our own. Mr. Reese is having trouble with his internet trying to get onto the Zoom link, so he will not be able to join us today to give us the presentation that he planned on as far as for the South Carolina Youth Challenge Academy. I had put him back up into the program so that his information would be there. And hopefully, we can schedule him for another meeting out either in November or maybe early next year to come on board and give his presentation that he was going to do.
Yeah, I don't think there's any objection to it. Go ahead and just put on the next agenda for the next meeting. I mean, unless, I don't think you're prepared to give the presentation for him, so I think that's the right way to go, unless anybody else disagrees.
No, I don't have his presentation memorized or know what he planned on talking about. So we'll just have to move on to the next one.
All right, item number nine then. That I believe is by you as well, Mr. Foot, correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right.
Any technical difficulties on here? This is a resolution that I will ask the committee to please move forward to full counsel for execution. And what the basis of the resolution is, is our mutual aid agreements that we have with other counties. So just to give you a little bit of history real quick, we have state code that we can enter into mutual aid agreements with other counties in order to house inmates in other counties if for some reason our detention center was unable to operate. We have about 10 of these mutual aids. Orangeburg is on here because the mutual aid that we have with them has run its course, and we are renewing it and updating it. So that's the reason why it's on right now. We use these mutual aids just as a backup in case anything was to go wrong with the detention center. We'd be able to have multiple mutual aids with a lot of counties because no one county would be able to just automatically take anywhere from 200 to 300 inmates at one time. So we kind of got a spread of counties that we would be able to send maybe 50 inmates to at a time that they could be able to handle a lot better than trying to take on 300 at one time. So this mutual aid is with Orangeburg County. They have taken the mutual aid agreement that is in the backup, and they have brought it forward to their council. Their council has approved it, and their county administrator has signed it. And so I'm asking at this time if the resolution could be moved on to full counsel and be approved for our county administrator to sign the agreement.
Before I ask for a motion, does anybody have any questions?
I do have one. Mr. Chairman, if I could. Mr. Chairman, do I have your permission to ask a question?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foot, how many mutual aids do we have? How many counties do we have?
With other counties, we have about seven.
And do you have a list of them, or you gotta, can you write them off real quick?
I don't have a list with me, but I can kind of give you an idea of who we got them with. We have one with Charleston County. We have one with Orangeburg. We have one with Lexington County, Richland County, Aiken County, and I believe Greenville County. And I think Spartanburg County is also in there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion to move item number nine to full counsel?
So moved.
All right, first by Mr. Somerville, second by Mr. Glover. Any objection? All right, go ahead and move that to counsel if we could, Sarah. Onto item number 10 then. I believe that is Judge Scott, who's going to be taking that one, correct?
Yes, sir. Judge Scott is our chief magistrate for Beaufort County. And she will go over and out. And if there's anything that I need to help with, because I've been kind of helping them with this process, this too has a resolution that will be needing to be forwarded to full counsel too at the end of this. Judge, let's take it over from there.
All right, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. My girlfriend, I'm here because the Beaufort City, as well as the town of Bluffton, the town of Port Royal, has asked that we enter into an intergovernmental agreement to consolidate clerical services within the bond court. And so with that, there's a contract that's been drawn up by our legal department and entered into with signatures from all three municipalities for the magistrate court to then take over clerical services for bond court. As you know, bond court is a 24 hours, seven days a week operation. So clerical services for bond court, which we will take over, will consolidate that instead of the municipality having one or two clerks available as well as the magistrates having a clerk available. That will allow us to have at least one or two clerks available at each time to then move forward with the process. We know that COVID with the pandemic, ours and the amount of work has been, it's not normal. So things are normalized a little bit more once, I guess, we're post-COVID, whatever that happens. But for right now, we're looking at the agreement to commence on December 1st, 2021. The judges will remain with the city. The staff member that is hired and will be paid by the city will report directly to the magistrate court. Quarterly payments will be made to the magistrate's office and will be billed by the magistrate's office. Each municipality will make a quarterly payment to the magistrate court to cover the costs and expenses for the staff person to include fringe benefits and as well as supplies. This agreement entered into will expire or set to expire in December 20th. I'm sorry, will renew annually, I'm sorry, and will only expire unless the parties give a 60-day written notice in advance. Any questions?
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Will this person be a county employee or?
I'm sorry, I can't. I can't hear the question.
It said, will the employee be a county employee?
She asked if the employee would be a county employee.
Employee will be a county employee, correct, and will not report to the city.
Is it correct, you said it's going to automatically renew unless one of the parties decides to give a 60-day written notice to drop?
Correct.
Do you have any other questions for her?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, real quick, Ms. Scott, this is almost like a consolidation of services, isn't it not? Consolidational services? No?
Mr. Glover is asking if this is a consolidation of services.
This is a consolidation of services. From my understanding, when we were approached, I think it was almost a year ago, this is a part of, I guess, a look at intergovernmental agreements to help streamline processes between Beaufort County and Beaufort City. So this is one in which we can consolidate, and we can do so quite easily because we currently share the bond court facilities. And so, as I said, the judges will remain judges of the municipality, and so they will actually come forth and will hear those cases. But the clerical services will be the only thing in which we're consolidating.
Councilman Glover, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And I really was wondering in my mind why wasn't this done some time ago, that's all. But all right, if you need a motion to move it forward, I shall do move.
I'll second.
Yeah, if we, first and seconded, any other discussion? Any objection? Just to move forward with no objection to full county counsel. Thank you for the presentation, Judge Scott. We appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to number 11 then. The approval of a resolution to accept state opioid response grant, number 93788, and the amount of $48,696.21.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. This item is approval to accept a, approval of a resolution to accept a state grant that was awarded to Steve with alcohol and drug. And he is here to give a brief description of the grant.
Good afternoon. I'm sure many of you have seen the billboards in Beaufort County that are advertising Narcan and anti-stigma messaging. There's six of them that have been going, that have been up in the county for the last year. Well, that, that money has ended, that grant has ended. But what we did was we wrote another grant to try to continue that and to get more funding. And we looked at the analytics, and there was 5 million views of the, of the billboards, which we thought was great. However, we also looked at our Facebook page and our newsletter that we have and saw that the Bluffton and Hilton Head area did not have such great viewing, according to the analytics. So what we want to do is we want to do more information dissemination and particularly target those areas as well as the rest of the county. Furthermore, we'll be doing more anti-stigma training, and we'll be doing more family fun activities. We did a number of those in the last grant. Excuse me, and that's what we're planning to do with this funding. It's just one year, and it's, we're hoping that it comes up again next year so that we'll be back here again next year. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but you do need this to go to full counsel for approval to accept the grant, right?
That is my understanding. Yes, sir.
Are there any questions in chambers, Ms. Howard or Mr. Glover?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have a motion? Thank you.
I make a motion to move it forward to full counsel.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Howard, second by Mr. Glover. Any objection? All right, it'll move forward with no objection. Number 11 is the appointment of Polly Peterson for a partial first term to the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Board with the expiration date of 2023. I believe that will go forward to counsel with, as long as there's no objection. If we have a motion along with, can I take those together, Sarah, 12 and 13?
Yes, you can.
All right, and then so 13 will be the appointment of Rick Cobb for a partial first term to the Bluffton Fire District Board, the expiration date of 2022. Do we have a motion to take those together?
So moved.
I'll second.
Somerville?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Glover. Any objection? I'll move forward with no objection to full counsel for our next meeting. Any last discussion? All right, I want to thank you guys for working with me while I'm out of town on a little vacation. Sorry again for those watching about the technical delays, but we got a good team that got it finished, and we will call this meeting to an end at 2:40.
Right. We'll go ahead and start natural resources.
Ms. Howard, can we take a five-minute break so that broadcasting can swap over supers and things like that?
Yes, ma'am. Five-minute break.